Right. How's everybody doing this evening? Good, good, good. This is, let the record show that we called our public hearing to order at 6:01 PM. I have a script to read off of. I have been informed by the county attorney's office that I need to stick to that script, so I'm going to do that. This is a public hearing for the board to consider the recommended orders issued by the special master and issue a final order on a Brookside Village residential subdivision. The board hired outside counsel in this matter out of an abundance of caution because the county attorney has a appearance of a conflict by living within close proximity to a proposed development. Ms. Sylvia Alderman has been retained to represent the board and will be providing legal advice throughout this hearing. Ms. Alderman, will you introduce the item, please?
Yes, sir. This is the first and only public hearing to consider the- This is the first and only public hearing to consider the recommended order and exceptions on the site and development plan application for Brookside Village residential subdivision. Because this agenda item involves board action in a quasi-judicial proceeding, certain protocols are provided for in the Leon County code. For instance, no new evidence may be received tonight. The purpose of the final hearing that was conducted by the special master was to hear and weigh all the evidence in this matter. Section 10-7-415 provides the structure for this public hearing. Public comment on the recommended order is received prior to the argument by the parties and is limited to three minutes per person. All parties who participated in the final hearing before the division of administrative hearings, including the county, are limited to a total of 20 minutes to present oral argument. The chairman may grant additional time for good cause shown. The presentation shall be as follows. Public comment, limited to three minutes per person. Oral argument by petitioners, Moore Pond Homeowners Association and Ox Bottom Manor Community Association, represented by Jeremy Anderson and Justin Gibbons of Anderson and Gibbons, limited to 20 minutes. Oral argument by respondent applicant Golden Oak Land Group LLC, represented by Gary Hunter and Aaron Tilton, Hopping Green and Sam's, limited to 20 minutes. Oral argument by respondent Leon County, represented by Gregory Stewart, Carly Schrader and Carrie Parsons of Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson, limited to 20 minutes. The staff recommendation is the revised option number one, to enter the proposed final order, attachment one, adopting the recommended order except as modified within the final order, thereby approving the Brookside Village residential subdivision, subject to the conditions outlined by the Development Review Committee in its written preliminary decision. And this is a revised package that was submitted to you as a revised option one.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Just real quick, so we can make it very, very clear. The attorneys involved on all sides, would you please stand for me, real quick? Just the attorneys. As she has said, it's 20 minutes per entity. There's an agreement that we will not go over those 20 minutes. Is that okay? So everybody has 20 minutes? That's all you got? Don't ask for any more, because I'm not giving you any more. Thank you. Alright, so now we, I think we're on the speakers now, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, so we have speakers come up. You'll give your name and address for the record. Each speaker, we have three minutes to speak. I believe we have eight. If there's any additional speakers that would like to speak, please bring your card to Ms. Boss over here. She will pass it up to the county minister. As he reads off your name again, please come up, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Once you give your name and address. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker is Christopher Kies.
Didn't expect to be first. Christopher Kies, 6788 Heartland Circle, Tallahassee. I'm going to give a little background. I haven't had the privilege of being before you, and I appreciate taking time to listen to us here tonight, Mr. Long. I've argued four cases in front of the Supreme Court of the United States and handled probably four dozen in front of the Supreme Court of Florida. I bring that up because the point I want to make tonight is precedent. I'm not going to speak against Mr. Gazvini. He's been cooperative. I'm not interested in stopping people's developments. I represent a lot of developers, have done it for, you know, many, many years. But I think the thing that this commission needs to consider is precedent. I live in one of the most protected zoning districts in the community. Maybe historical preservation might be a little bit better than residential preservation. The way this code is being interpreted, there are no rules. There are no rules. You can just do what you want. And what's going to happen is, the next person that comes along that you want to stop, this development may or may not be good. You may think it's fine. But the next guy that comes along and you want to say, "Hey, this doesn't meet the criteria. We want to exercise our discretion this way," they're going to point to this case. That's what I'd do. That's what I'd do if I were in the Supreme Court. I'd drag you all the way up there and I'd say, "Look, you allowed this development, where you got one for every three acres, or two per acre, and now we're going to interpret the code in such a way, as we got 35 acres, we're only going to build on about eight of them, and then we're going to look at the density based on the whole 35 acres." I mean, it's nuts. It stands the whole interpretation of the code on its head. Y'all have the discretion. This is your code. We elect you, we rely on you, look at this code and interpret it in a logical way. And, you know, I haven't been that involved. I spend most of my time, unfortunately, over at the other buildings. Haven't been that involved in this process. But if we can't rely on you, then maybe it's time for people like me with resources to dump a million dollars into an account and start running political ads, because that's why y'all are here. We pay a lot of taxes, we appreciate your service. By and large, y'all do a good job. But I think you'd better think very carefully about the precedent. Again, I'm not speaking against Mr. Gazvini or his development. We want him to make money. He's done a lot of good things in the community. He was very cooperative with myself and a couple other neighbors. I mean, he's made some, you know, he's made some accommodations, but he's going to do what you let him do. And so I leave it to y'all's discretion. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next speaker? The next speaker is Bruce, and I'm going to go with Bruce M., since he told me that was okay here on this card.
Bruce Menchais.
Okay, thank you.
All the kids know how to say that, but adults don't. Bruce Menchais, 6807 Heartland Circle, Tallahassee, Florida, 323127524. I'm actually dismayed and disgusted at what has come up to people that pay pretty good taxes in Leon County. And we've really been slapped in the face in regards to what's coming in there, this development. Not that I believe that you could put in, I think you can put in a lot less houses, maybe a little bit more upscale. We haven't seen them. Where they're going to be Cracker Jack boxes, that are popping up around town like crazy, that are made out of fiberglass and Laster Murek paint, and that's it. I don't know if they're brick, or how they're designed. But I came into Moore Pond several years ago, built a pretty nice home. Hopefully, that it enhances Leon County and the city of Tallahassee, the way I built it. I spent a lot of money, and I got a lot of craftsmen to do good work, which is very difficult to get today. I think Mr. Disani is, you know, he can do whatever he wants to his property. But I had always been led to believe that, in Leon County and particularly the city of Tallahassee, that we could build a community that would be somewhat protected. I don't see that anymore. I don't see any kind of protection whatsoever, from an investor's point of view, meaning a homeowner. I've had people ask me, "Can I come to Tallahassee and build a small community?" And I say, "No way. Go somewhere else. Go somewhere where the community, county, and the city are going to protect you, and watch out what's going to come on up in there." This cluster home stuff is ridiculous. Thirty-two homes? I walked that property yesterday for probably the fourth or fifth time. I spent a couple of hours walking down the ravine, and in reality, you can't build too far. You've got to build pretty far away from that ravine, because it gets a lot of water. And I found three springs. I do think that there needs to be a lot more thought about this. I think that the developer should sit down with people in the community and say, "Hey, look, what could we do to make this better?" Because it could be. It's a beautiful, environmentally, great place for kids to learn what's going on with our natural environment. But anyway, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Jean Sharon.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Jean Sharon. I'm a Floridian. I was born in Hollywood, Florida, some 86 years ago. I have a master's degree from the University of Florida, master's degree in EHD from George Washington. I served in this country for 23 years in the Army. I worked in higher education for 23 years, last hated Florida State. I retired as a professor in 2000. I've lived in Moore Pond 20 years, and I've received, I've worked on the board for five years. My major concern are compatibility with the adjoining neighborhoods. No county official has said there's no definition for compatibility, yet that's what the staff said. Why not just look at the dictionary? A state in which two things are able to exist or occur together without problems or conflicts. To me, this new development puts 61 homes on 12 acres. However, the developer counts wetlands, and the size is now 36 acres. Moore Pond has 60 homes. It's several hundred acres. Has a little pond in the middle, 55 acres. It's important that we compare and contrast those two. How important is the approval of this development to the county? It's spent thousands of dollars of our money to hire staff, outside attorneys and experts to testify that this development is compatible with the other three neighboring developments. These expert and outside legal teams spent hours in appealing this at the hearing that we went to not too long ago, which produced a 2,000-page report. Staff claims that there's no impact on this area with 61 homes. The water runoff is a concern to me, and there is a good letter by, "Leak audit to that effect." I already have enough water runoff on my property, so that I have built two berms to try and stop it. The developer proposes digging a three-foot ditch, fill it with sand, and it will dissipate the water in 24 hours. What about in five years from now, when that sand is filled with silt? Who's going to take care of the runoff? Moore Pond is part of the Northwest Water Management's responsibility, yet I've heard no concern raised by them. Why not? When we ask about the impact on schools at Hawks Rise and Charles, the good statistics we prepared by homeowners, Floridian, but staff said that would look into it, and there's no impact on the schools. Fire department said there's no impact on the road. They said that they have bigger vehicles and won't be parked there. What about the ambulance service? No impact on traffic in Ox Bottom Road? No impact on medical service? No impact on the neighborhood? You know what? Ladies, I would ask you to think about this. 61 homes in about 100 yards across Ox Bottom.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker.
Ryan Andrews.
Name and address for the record, please, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Andrews. My office is 822 North Monroe Street, Tallahassee, Florida. I am here today on behalf of myself, and behalf of Phil Downs, a resident in the Moore Pond I've followed this project a lot over the last 12 years, and I've watched cluster communities such as this spring up all over town. This one's a little different because of the residential preservation area that it impacts. This project is being pushed by Golden Oak Land Group, of which you are familiar. This is a company managed and owned by Steve Gazvini. Through his companies, he's, I believe some of you are quite familiar with Mr. Gazvini. He's made many donations to a lot of your campaigns, including Commissioner Dozier. On October 27, 2017, Commissioner Dozier received 16 checks totaling $4,000 as donations to her campaign. I'm uncomfortable knowing that Commissioner Dozier may have a vote today, knowing that those donations were made while the Dowa case was pending. It concerns me, and it concerns my client. The supercilious nature of these donations during the pending litigation are very concerning. As a result, on behalf of my client and myself, we both request that Commissioner Dozier recuse herself from tonight's vote. You know, we've read a lot in the news about perfunctory votes by many of the different commissions in Tallahassee, but tonight's doesn't have to be. Dowa issued an order, which I believe everyone has reviewed and is aware of, but this, I think everyone on this committee, or commission that is elected knows that it's this commission that makes policy, not the courts, not a Dowa judge. Safe to say, I think everyone in this room disagrees with what the Dowa judge's recommendation was. But again, judges don't make policy. This commission does, and is trusted with that decision. There's a lot of respected commissioners, Commissioner Dozier included on this committee, who have done great work for Tallahassee, who've looked out for their constituents and the county as a whole. Commissioner Deluge, I happen to know your daughter very well, I think very highly of her. I know you to be a avid outdoorsman, hunter, fisherman, runner, snowskier. You know, this project is in your district, and it's very concerning, because it sets a bad precedent of what is to come in the future. If we can disrespect residential preservation areas such as this, everyone's district is in play. And there's a lot of people here today, on behalf of themselves, with attorneys, and there's no guarantee that when this is used in the future, that those people will have the wherewithal and financial ability to come up here and fight it in Dowa, fight it in the courts, and go from there. I see my time is up. I'd like to make one last point. I don't believe, in my review, I have found that the commission has analyzed this project in connection with Florida statute, section 70.001, Private Property Rights Protection, which is also known as the Burt J. Harris Private Property Rights Protection Act.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. I would just thank you for your time, and I would suggest the commission review this project in light of that statute.
Chairman, I have a point of unreadiness in this procedure.
Before you get there, real quick. Madam Attorney, you want to speak to the speaker's request or refuse?
With regard to the request for recusal, in order, in this proceeding, to have a request heard by the commission, it would have to come from counsel from the parties, as opposed to a member of the public, because it is a formal procedure. Additionally, I do not see any conflict, because you have received a campaign contribution. If that were a test, then no campaign contributions could ever be received by a sitting county commissioner. But if a party wants to make a formal request for recusal, we can take it up at that time. But you know how I feel about it at this point.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Commissioner Partner?
Well, counsel addressed it for me, and she said, based upon how she feels, so I guess it would be a unilateral decision by you, a special master, to determine if a recusal would be warranted. Is that your point?
I'm sorry, I do not understand your question.
You said if a formal request for recusal was offered, that you would decide if, in fact, the recusal was warranted?
Yes.
In terms of-
Yes, if one of the parties made a request for recusal, I would review it, obviously. But it would have to come from one of the parties. I've also made the comment that, in my opinion, it is not a conflict, anyway. Just wanted to make that point.
Alright, well, Mr. Chairman, if I might say that. I'm not defending Commissioner Dozier, because I don't know what happened. But if it's been made clear that receiving a contribution is not a grounds for, I think that for the future persons talking at this day, that what appears to be an attack of her integrity, as if she's bought. That's what it sounds like. It jades, and it puts something, ink in the water, that's not fair to her integrity, or any of our integrity on the basis of that. So I think low-ball comments like that, at one of the commissioners, for whatever they did, I mean, she could have gone to the wrong church, could have ate at the wrong grocery store. I don't know. You know, I like to see us stick to the facts and to the merits of the case before us, and not attacks on one of my colleagues.
Thank you, Commissioner Partner. For the attorneys in the room that may be speaking, there are speakers from the public, I have given the, Madam Attorney representing the county, the ability to interrupt if you start to proceed with legal argument, because I can't really identify legal arguments as well as she can. And so I've given her that authority. I just want to make that clear, that she has that authority. And then, once she does that, I can moderate the conversation from there. But any legal argument, she will step in and let me know this legal argument, so the proper conversation can happen. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Rachel Bowden.
My name is Rachel Bowden. I live at 6247 Heartland Circle. Been there about a year and a half with my two children and my husband. And I've been following this since I've lived here. And I know there have been several studies, or surveys, rather, that have gone out to the neighborhoods that are affected, us in Moore Pond, Ox Bottom Manor, and also at Rose Hill, to talk about whether or not this is considered compatible to us, in the public's opinion. And then this same study to random members of Leon County. And overwhelmingly, all of the residents, the ones that are affected, and even ones that were chosen at random, are saying, "No, this is not compatible." And yet, the county is not performing a compatibility, what is it called? A compatibility analysis. It seems to me that the rules that govern this, what you're allowed to build, are really for the intention of protecting people's investments, their property values, wildlife, the quality of life that we, I'm looking at the thing coming up that says, "Why we love where we live." I love where I live, and I feel like it's really going to be eroded by this. It's not compatible, and I don't understand why no one else sees that. It's overwhelmingly unpopular, and yet it's getting rammed through, and it doesn't feel like, no matter how many times we stand up and say and show what it looks like that they're proposing to build versus where it's going, that it's making any impression on anyone. I mean, how many of you would want, like, 20 houses in your backyard? That's what Bob Burton's getting. Sorry, dude. It's like three-quarters of a million-dollar house, with 20 houses in his backyard. And they're all uphill, so we're going to see, everyone's going to see them. I don't get it. The other thing is, Tallahassee is not like anywhere USA, where you just, you drive through and you can't tell, you know, it's just a sea of strip malls and cluster houses, and Tallahassee's not that. I don't feel like it's that. And I just feel like, the more we do this, it's just becoming anywhere USA. Just, you know, cut down all the trees, pave everything, put up a retention pond. And I just think this is wrong. And it's certainly wrong in a residential preservation area, that this is supposed to be. I just don't understand it. I think this is shameful. I think it's sad. I have a hard time explaining this to my kids. It's not okay. And the school analysis was baloney. The fire chief said they can't even get the fire trucks down there properly, and yet there was really no remedy. It was sort of like, "Oh, we'll just drive over the cars, ha, ha, ha." I don't think anyone's taking this seriously, and I think it's shameful. And you all have a legacy, the builder and you all. And I think that you're doing the wrong thing by not considering this more carefully. This is not compatible. It's simply not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Randy Gimple.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you. My name's Randy Gimple. I live at 293 Thornburg Drive in Ox Bottom Manor. I've been a resident there for 18 years now. I, coming at it strictly as a homeowner, and I just step back and take a look at it when you have Moore Pond on one side, Ox Bottom Manor on the other side, I just don't understand why you would put a high-density project in there. Not against development. We could lower the density, make it work out, but not this situation. And how it affects the adjacent homeowners on Moore Pond side and Ox Bottom Manor side, I don't know anything about the values of the property, but I sure know it is adversely going to affect them. So I just step back, look at it from a reasonable standpoint, and I think it is very reasonable to do that compatibility study, whatever it is. I just think that needs to be done. I don't know why a judge, I guess, rejected that, but that's all the comments I have. I'm just talking as a homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Kerry Tate.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you very much for hearing me this evening. Kerry Tate, live at 7072 Ox Bow Road. Been there for the last 20 years. And I'd like to thank you for hearing our comments tonight regarding this, what I believe is really an undesirable project, that is just really completely out of character with the surrounding neighborhoods. And I'm also, as one of the representatives of the Ox Bottom Homeowners Association, I'd like to state that we have worked over the years with many developments. It certainly isn't the first. And we've worked with them very successfully. They've usually come and reach out to us first, to see how the adjacent neighborhoods will be impacted. Unfortunately, in this case, that didn't happen, to my knowledge. The homeowners in our area represent millions of dollars invested. Of course, we also understand that these individuals, they have paid taxes on their property as well, and want to develop their property. But it's imperative, though, that through this process, that the design of the neighborhood be done responsibly. And that's clearly not been done in this case. We have a development that just hasn't been done in a responsible way. And even though recently, I'll tell you, we've worked with the city utility, they came to us, and they said, "Hey, Kerry, you know, we're wanting to look at a substation in your neighborhood." They came and talked to us, and we worked through and built something that we can be proud of. A utility, of all things. Something that everyone recognizes that we need. Okay, so, please take note that this is not a high-density or an industrial park area. I mean, you're talking about a low, medium-density neighborhood. And they greatly value preservation of natural areas, the natural ambiance. You drive down the street, you feel the natural ambiance of the area within our neighborhood. And it's a position that I think all Tallahasians truly embrace. And so please reject this poorly-designed plan by insisting that the home density, that the roadway offsets, that the roadway preservation be more consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. We're looking for a win-win here, not a situation where four surrounding neighborhoods lose at the expense of this one development. Okay, again, thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Lee Kotick, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Name and address for the record, please.
Called me when I grew up.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. I know you all have good intentions, and that's why you get into the jobs that you do. Let me just give you a little background. I hope not to exceed my allotted three minutes. My wife, Audrey, and I have lived on Lot 25A, which is 6287 Heartland Circle. For 24 years, I was the owner, builder. My hands were involved in the construction, and my wife was too, and my son was. We've been chased around Leon County three, this would be the third time, because of growth and development. As a family, we are engaged in fundraising for charitable events and community supportive agencies that provide help to people who have special needs, elderly, Alzheimer's, people in hospice. We get a kick out of doing that. We think that's what good citizens do. Moore Pond is a very diverse community, and it's one that I've enjoyed living in. I've been the homeowner, lake chairperson, for 24 years, since its inception, when it was built. I sort of have a bad sense of humor, and I'm going to tell you, I feel like I'm a fish out of water here. But my specific concerns will be further addressed regarding the ecosystem and Moore Pond itself, the body of water. Before I get into that, a compatibility analysis should have been done. If an administrative law judge wants to interpret the way that he or she did, then there's something wrong with the laws or the regulations regarding how they are applied to preserve neighborhoods. Nobody's mentioned Meridian Road. I thought that was on the preservation list. Nobody's mentioned Meridian Road. I thought that was on the preservation list. You're dumping, not you personally, the way things have gone, uh, dumping a lot more traffic out. It took me forty minutes to get over here. Let me get to the point. Um, in addition to density concerns, traffic concerns, wildlife displacements, I know those of you who grew up in Tallahassee, probably a lot of you might have gone fishing, squirrel hunting, duck hunting, deer hunting, and you might have really enjoyed bass fishing. Okay, we as a homeowners association have diligently maintained that pond. It is a basin that cannot discharge, uh, water. Um, so in order to protect the facility, it needs adequate ground and surface water to maintain its health. Its level depends upon rainfall, and also, we are fed by the two impoundments that are on the Brookside Development. Those, I think, were put in there because cattle used to feed there. Those, oh God, that was fast.
Yeah, huh?
Yeah, all right. Um, our lake committee has worked, and we've contracted services to be proactive in the event that you are not in favor of disapproving this. We have testing going on, pre and post-development in three ways. We contract, well, we are, uh, grandfathered in with Florida Lake Watch to protect our lake. They measure water quality, they measure chlorophyll, phosphorus, uh, uh, fish population, and so on.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Um, in God we trust, but all others better provide data. This is a dangerous precedent you're setting by allowing any kind of pollution to come near. It's not the homeowners association. I want to be clear, it's my lake. No, I'm just, um, that's my sense of humor. But people who know me
Right, yeah.
know I've taken it, taken good care, care of it. I enjoy, I invite you to come out fishing. As for me and my wife, we don't want the development. If you, if theoretically politicians are in bed with the developers
Yes, your time, sir.
and in your hearts, you think the development is legal. One second, Commissioner, I appreciate it. And if your hearts, in your hearts, you think this is legal, then at least prohibit any construction within ten acres of the impoundment, and provide a green space which would be good for the people who move into the neighborhood. I'm all for community development. I'm all over Leon County.
Time, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Our last speaker is Steve Gazveny.
Name and ask, address for the record, please, sir. Ms. Boss, did you get the previous speaker's name and address? He did say it during his time. Thank you.
Thank you. Based on Gazveny, forty-seven oh-eight Capital Circle Northwest. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, I just have got a few things to say. Process started about two years ago. Before we even purchased the property, we went met with the homeowners association. We notified them, met in the church several times. We've had three, four meetings with the several, uh, of the homeowners that joined us, and the homeowners association folks that joined us. Appreciate Mr. Ky's comments. We changed a lot of things based on their comments. We met with their, uh, engineering. Their engineer ultimately were happy young, satisfied with our explanation. Um, everything that we have done either meets or exceeds your requirement. Our, our buffer exceeds your requirement. Our density is not even close to what is allowed in there. And, uh, again, my, my point is, we worked with the neighborhood for two years. We finally satisfied them, as far as what we knew. Nobody had any complaints, nobody had any more comments. We moved forward. We followed the process. The process that she gave us went through the DRC. Your staff find our design and our planning ultimately according to the law. Uh, some of the neighbors did not like it, despite the fact that they have agreed that we have satisfied them. So they appealed. As far as the process, so we followed that process again. We went to the court, the door, but the judge, you know, sided with us, meaning that we followed your rules. Uh, we're back in front of you, and, uh, we're asking you to, uh, allow what the judge and your staff has agreed, and, you know, issue us the permit that we have been working with for two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any more speakers?
That concludes our speakers on this item.
Madam Attorney, what's next in the process?
Next in the process will be oral argument by petitioners.
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeremy Anderson with the Andersons, giving his law firm, sixteen-eighty-nine Mahan Center Boulevard, uh, for the petitioners, Moore Pond Community Association and Ox Bottom Manor Association. Um, it's our request that the proposed order, before you not be approved, and this project be sent back and make it more compatible to the adjacent Ox Bottom Manor and Moore Pond neighborhoods. Um, the basis for our challenge, um, and, and our request tonight is based upon this competent substantial evidence provided by our expert, or about, um, he testified substantially during the nine, nine-hour hearing that we had, um, and that he consistently indicated that the project was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and it was not in compliance with all the land development regulations, which is required for developments to be approved and development orders to be issued within Leon County. And it's our position, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it violates the land development regulations, because the property is not compatible, the proposed development's not compatible with Ox Bottom Manor and the Moore Pond subdivisions. Um, what's being proposed is this tightly-packed, on-quarter-acre lots, uh, two stories, very, almost virtually zero lot lines, I think five, five feet setbacks, uh, and they're situated clustered, abutting the lot lines with the adjacent subdivisions. Um, our expert provided us, uh, a plethora of competent substantial evidence supporting that it shouldn't be approved. Um, and I'm going to discuss some of those areas, not introducing new evidence, but just kind of going back over the record, trying to paint a picture, so you understand how incompatible this is, and why you had the number of speakers indicating their displeasure for it. And also, I'm going to respectfully indicate why the judge came to the incorrect conclusion. Lot size. So lot size in the Brookside Village Development, some of them are as small as point-one-four acres. Uh, average size is point-two-six acres. The only reason why they're that high is two of the lots are just over an acre, so it kind of skews the size of the lots up. Uh, lots in Moore Pond range from one-point-four-nine acres to twelve-point-three-nine acres, with an average of three-point-zero-nine. That is a seventeen, uh, times difference between Moore Pond and Ox Bottom Manor. Not the same, not compatible. Uh, Ox Bottom Manor ranges from point-five-three acres to almost an acre, with the average being point-six-seven. That's a two-and-a-half times difference. Um, our expert of over forty years of comprehensive plan drafting, land planning, and implementation, and actually doing reviews of projects, and including in a lot of jurisdictions, much larger and much more dense, uh, than, um, Leon County, he even determined that they were incompatible, um, based upon lot size. Uh, the reason why it's important, again, the way the development's situated, they're clustered toward the edges, so there's, there's very small lots abutting the larger lots in the subdivision, uh, for both Moore Pond and Ox Bottom. Density. The Brookside Development, um, you can hear it time and time again, it's under what's allowable. But that's just, that doesn't mean that you stop your analysis there. One-point-seven-three acres, uh, for Brookside versus Ox Bottom Manor, which is only one-point-one-zero-eight, uh, units per acre. Moore Pond is point-two-three units per acre. That's significant. That, that's over seven times difference in density for adjacent developments. Um, again, our expert of over forty years in land planning determined that that by itself, the density, just along with lot size, is incompatible, and that alone could then allow for the disapproval of the project, and should have required it to be disapproved. Lot coverage, that means, what did you build on the lot, and how much of it is just, just free yard and not improvements on the lot or homes on the lot. The average lot coverage in Brookside is twenty-four percent. The average lot coverage in Moore Pond, five percent. Uh, as you can see, that's, that's essentially five times difference on just the lot coverage. Um, the average lot, uh, the average, uh, lot coverage in Ox Bottom Manor is only ten percent. Again, that's differs by fourteen percent with being proposed in Ox Bottom, excuse me, in Brookside Village. Um, our expert, again, over forty years, concluded that factor alone makes it incompatible with Ox Bottom Manor and Moore Pond. Um, now this one, he's pictured this, this is the lot frontage, and the bulk, and the mass, and just how these buildings are. So you have two rather long lengths of, of, of property boundaries abutting Moore Pond and Ox Bottom Manor, and along those shared lines, there's only for the proposed development, they have their two-story buildings, I believe this is going to be constructed, and there are five-yard, or five-foot yard setbacks. So that's going to be about ten feet between each of the buildings that are essentially going to be two stories. The percentage of total length of building along those abutting property lines for, uh, for Brookside is eighty-eight percent. So you're going to have a large lot, living in, in Moore Pond, and look out the back of your home, and you're going to see nothing but eighty-eight percent of building frontage all along that lot line. And you're going to look out your window to the side, to the side, and in that instance, um, the percentage in, 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 in Moore Pond along the same is only twenty-nine percent. So we're talking about three times more building along the same frontage. Uh, the, the total, uh, building facade for Ox Bottom Manor is only forty-five percent, so we're, we're even doubling it there. And in both instances, our expert planner provided evidence on the record that this may sit incompatible with the proposed developments. Um, what does the county want you to do through their analysis, and what respectfully does the, the judge incredibly condone? Well, if you read the judge's proposed order, and if you re-look at the record, the county just wants you to do an analysis, if you, if you meet the range of density, so we're between zero and six. Um, so that means if, if Mr. Gazveny and the development, they wanted to build all the way up to six acres under the analysis provided by the judge and the county, all they want you to do is the density analysis. Throw everything outside, don't look at the rest of your comprehensive plan. Who cares what your code says? All you're looking at is, on a little piece, piece of paper, they're going to reference, it's, they're going to say, oh, it's the, the density matrix. And you look down this little line here, and you follow this little line here, and if it's green, it means go. That's not what your plan says. Your plan has a, a requirement that you analyze compatibility. So, and those are those things that I was just talking about. All those, those different factors, the, the design, the bulk size, the lot size, the facade frontage, all these enumerated factors that I'm going to get into. And if you don't do that analysis, basically what you're telling the developers, they can build whatever they want, without regard to what the adjacent neighbors, what their existing neighborhoods are, and, uh, that's just not right. We're not trying to say the developers can't build, but you have to analyze their project versus the abutting project. Is it compatible? And if it's compatible, you can construct it. If it's not, go back to the drawing board, reduce lot size, reduce, excuse me, increase lot size, or reduce the number of lots, uh, decrease the lot frontage, things like that, to make it more compatible. Um, consistency. So let's just, so you, help you understand, I think it's undisputed on the record and, and it's in state law, that, uh, section one-sixty-three, thirty-one-ninety-four three A defines what consistency is, and helps us look as, uh, land use practitioners, when we're looking at a development order, which you're potentially considering to approve. The development order or land development regulation shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, if the land uses densities or intensities and other aspects of the development permitted by such order or regulation are compatible with the, with and further the objective policies and land use, uses and densities or intensities of the comp plan, and if it meets all other criteria enumerated by the local government. So you heard a lot of stuff in there, but it talks about land uses and densities, intensities, and it says, um, you know, all other, all other aspects of the development. Why just laid, laid out a lot of different aspects of development? That's what they're trying to, to build. Where the buildings are, lot sizes, things like that. Um, so all of those should be kind of considered when we're, when we're doing that. And, and the main thing is, by statute, that requires us to do a compatibility review. All right? And it's undisputed on, on testimony that there isn't a definition of compatibility in the comprehensive plan. Uh, I believe that was testified by our expert, the expert of the, uh, the applicant, and even the county. Um, and I believe the judge's, uh, indication that, well, it really doesn't matter, um, we're not going to use the statutory definition of compatibility. I believe respectfully, he's wrong. There's a case in the first DCA, uh, Catherine's Bay LLC versus Fagan, that essentially indicates that it is appropriate when the land development, or the, the, uh, county or the city doesn't have a definition of compatibility, let's look to the statute. And in the statute, one-sixty-three, thirty-one, um, you know, one-sixty-three, thirty-one, thirty-one-sixty-four-nine defines compatibility as meaning a condition in which land uses, that means, okay, this residential development, or conditions can coexist, coexist in relative proximity to each other in stable fashion over time, and that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. They keep saying use and condition. You're not just looking to see, is this just a residential use, next door residential use, and is this, is this proposed development within the, uh, the density? No, you're supposed to also look, not only beyond, you're supposed to look beyond the residential preservation use, but what are the conditions? And the conditions are, what is being constructed on there? The density, the lot use, the lot coverage, all of those things I mentioned. And that by statute, I think the judge was wrong by not using that and requiring the county to, to use that when it's doing its analysis. Okay, uh, policy two-point, two-point-two-point-three. Um, again, respectfully, I think the judge got this wrong. Policy two-point-two-point-three, uh, is, is part of your, in your future land use section of your comp plan, talks about the residential preservation area, and it gives a entire listing of different elements and factors that should be reviewed in the compatibility analysis. Uh, what I believe the judge, uh, missed, and, and, is there's an introductory paragraph, it says, "In, in order to preserve existable, stable, and viable residential neighborhoods within the residential preservation land use category", here's the keyword, "development and redevelopment activities in and adjoining residential areas shall be guided by the following principles." So we have a development, it's in that area, and the next paragraph, paragraph E, that I'm going to talk about, doesn't provide an exclusion just because it's already in the residential preservation, and it's a residential, uh, type of development, that you exclude a compatibility review. Uh, I believe the judge indicates that, um, that because it lists other additional criteria to review, that that paragraph doesn't apply. That's incorrect. And the reason why it's incorrect is, again, it doesn't exclude it. I think there was, when this was adopted, it listed all the different things, because this review addresses not only stuff that's in the residential preservation, but adjoining the residential preservation, which also could have some of the factors that aren't traditionally, uh, reviewed when you're looking at residential. Um, an interesting thing, I, I also, uh, uh, believe that, um, I listed all those different factors, and, um, and I'll list in E exactly what it states. It says, "At a minimum, the following factors shall be considered," so shall, "to determine whether a proposed development," again, we're, we're proposing a development here, "is compatible, compatible with existing or proposed low-density residential uses." So my clients are low-density residential uses. This is a development. There's no exclusion that says, just because you got another purported low-density development, that you throw this review out. Because, again, if we don't have this review, all we're reviewing for is, when they come in, is, does it meet the residential density? There is no other review. So that means that the, the proposed applicant, if there wasn't constraints on the lot, could have actually built six units per acre. So you think they're up in arms about one-point-seven-three units per acre. If there wasn't the environmental constraints and more could be built on there, that could be six units per residential acre, next to point-two-three of Moore Pond. Um, I don't think that's how this is supposed to apply. Um, and I don't think the analysis done by the, the, the county in the review process was adequate and identified those. Um, and then also, one of the things that I, I inquired, um, and on the record asked the, the, the county representatives and their expert witnesses, is, if it's in your comp plan, do you, do you have to use that analysis? If there's language in there that requires you, are you bound to use that analysis? And I believe the answer was an affirmative. And what I'm getting at is, the definition of intensity, typically you don't think that's used with a, a residential development, but we're bound by what our plan says. And the definition, and the way, the example that was given for the, the, the use of intensity also included residential uses. So if you look at two-point-two-point-three E, and you look at all the things that are required, it lists all these different, but then it, one of the things it states in there twice is intensity. Intensity is just- Intensity is just, and our expert testified, that's everything that I just talked about, the bulk, the mass, the frontage, the height, the lot coverage, all of those things. So not only were they supposed to analyze those individual criteria, they were supposed to analyze it intensity overall, and that wasn't done. So that's why the project shouldn't have been approved. Section 10-705 of your code requires that development be compatible as practicable. And our expert, of course, testified that, no, this development is not as compatible as practicable, and there's things that could have been done to make it more compatible. Again, we weren't saying, throw the development out, we're not going to approve it. What could be proposed is, reduce the number of lots, increase the lot size. There are actually two larger parcels that could be cut up, you take out a few lots, cut those up, and I believe it'd be a more compatible lot, because you would reduce lot coverage, reduce the frontage, and also you'd reduce the density. Excuse me? So our request is simple, is that you, what the county proposed and approved, and what the judge respectfully put in his proposed order, what we're contending is that it shouldn't have been approved in the first place by the DRC. They incorrectly did it, and they didn't even follow what the county adopted for its comprehensive plan. And if we do take the position which is, all we're looking at is whether the project has to meet the density requirements, then there is no other review, and going through the DRC process and going through all that is a big waste of time, because the developers can come in and build as dense as they want and do whatever they want without any specific limitations, without any, have to worry about what's the impact going to be on the neighbors. And that's what we're trying to prevent here. So we would respectfully request that the proposed order be denied, and that the applicant be required to go back and make it, as your code requires, to be as compatible as practicable. And that means making adjustments to the lots to eliminate those incompatibilities that we provided on the record and that I illustrated today. Thank you very much.
Boss, how much time do you have left? About 2 and 1/2 minutes? You don't want to use? Okay. Before he starts, commissioners, given the seriousness and the quasi-traditional nature of what we're doing here today, let's let these people get completely through their presentation before we interrupt. I wouldn't want to pause or not give full-time argument to either side. I appreciate you wrapping up early, but I want to make sure you have every minute of every second that you have to present your argument. So I would ask the commissioners that as these young men present, they will let them get completely through their presentation without any interruption. You have the floor, 20 minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, my name's Gary Hunter. I'm the attorney for Golden Oak Land Group et al., the developer in this case. Let me try to, and I shouldn't take the whole 20 minutes, if I do, shame on me, let me try to simplify this without citing a bunch of codes to you and citing a bunch of numbers and density and comparisons of what's next door and what's proposed. This is about complying with your land development code and your comprehensive plan. That's what this entire case is about. We heard a lot of argument from neighbors that wasn't presented at the public hearing. That's not fair for you to consider. I think your lawyer would agree with that. What you have to consider today is the record that was presented, the issues that were raised, primarily only really compatibility was raised by Morpon and Ox Bottom Manor, who filed the petition to go to the Division of Administrative Hearings and have a hearing. So let's walk through the processes that happened over time, starting back over two years ago. First, my client does a permitted use verification request, which your code sets forth that says, what can I do on this property? And your staff responds to my client and says, here are the things that you can do under our comp plan and under our land development code on this property. That's zone residential preservation and has a land use classification as residential preservation. Those things included, you can develop, if you have water and sewer, which this property does, you're inside the urban service area, which by the way, your comp plan very much encourages, the more dense development to occur inside your urban service area where urban services are provided, as opposed to going external to your urban service area, and adding density where it isn't welcome, because you don't have urban services. So you've got all these policies that encourage development inside the urban service area. They apply with a permitted use verification, saying, what can we do? Your staff responds and says, here's what you can do, which is more than what we asked to do. They then submit an application, go through the ARM process for, your staff review process for two years, three different times to the ARM to receive comments, hear everything that you heard, the people, very good people who stood up here before you today and raised to you, had raised to your staff in the ARM review process. They then finally, they make changes, as Mr. Gazveny, my client, testified to, after meeting upon meeting upon meeting, and the record is, reflects the number of meetings that were held between the applicant and the various homeowners associations and individual homeowners over a two-year period. Now, I'm talking about meetings external to your formal meeting processes, private meetings held with the community to say, what can we do to adjust this project? That's not my phone, I hope. And after those meetings, they make the amendments that were made to the plan, they reduce the density, they make the lots larger, not because they had to, by the way, because your code doesn't require them to, but they make the lots larger adjacent to the Ox Bottom lots and adjacent to the Morpon lots. They reduce the density, they address many of the environmental concerns, had experts, hired, meeting with the experts from Morpon to help design the filtration systems in the ponds and to make, put in an extra, and none of this, by the way, was raised in the administrative hearing, but I'm just giving you a background of what led up to where we are today, put in an extra overflow and underflow provisions in the pond to make sure adequate amounts of water got to Morpon, so as to not impair the water quality or the water quantity in Morpon. They put in polishing plannings adjacent to the ponds on the proposed development site, to provide additional polishing and cleaning to the water that was going into Morpon, far beyond what is there today. The water, your environmental staff determined is going to be cleaner when it gets there than today in the form of a horse and cow pasture that exists on that site. And so you've got, you've got all of this history of effort between the developer and the neighbors, not because they had to do it, but because they wanted to do it in an effort to listen and address those concerns. They then get a report from your DRC that says, they're entitled to get exactly what's before you today with the conditions that were imposed by your DRC. And so your professional development staff said, you comply with our land development code, you comply with our comp plan. That didn't satisfy some of our neighbors, so they used the processes that your code provides for, they filed an appeal. That appeal went in front of an administrative law judge, and we had a nine-hour hearing one day in November. Fortunately, it was a rainy day and none of us minded being in that hearing. And we sat over at DOA and we heard every bit of the arguments that you just heard Mr. Anderson provide to you. And every one of his arguments were rejected by the administrative law judge, who by the way, has been an administrative law judge dealing with land use issues for 25 years. He's about to retire, but his entire history over at DOA has been hearing exactly these types of issues. And he listened to the testimony from, of course, the petitioner's expert, and the petitioner's expert said exactly what you just heard, that everything the county had done was wrong, shocker. My expert said that everything the county had done was right, shocker. I mean, I know you're surprised that the petitioner and the person proposing the development had competing opinions from their experts. But most importantly, your county staff, two members of your county staff sat up on that stand and testified, here's how we apply our code, and here's how we apply our comp plan. And that administrative law judge said your county staff was correct. And so a lot of the argument we hear today, you know, maybe there's valid points raised, maybe your code needs to be revised, I'm not arguing that it does, but maybe that's what we're hearing complaints about. But this is a residential preservation neighborhood area that allows up to six units per acre when you have water and sewer. In this case, we have 1.73 units per acre. We've also applied your comp plan in a way that preserves a massive area in the center of the property, because your plan encourages that to happen when you've got sensitive environmental features on a site, and this site has that, and that entire area has been preserved. So the real question before you is, why would you do, why would you alter, and what have you heard that would justify you altering the application of your code and your plan that in every review that's occurred by someone related to the county in the form of your staff and related not to the county in the form of an administrative law judge had determined, had been done properly in this case? Your comp plan's provisions have been complied with, and your land development code provisions have been complied with. There's nothing of record new tonight, and by the way, the record's been set, so that you don't hear any new evidence tonight, you only get to hear the application of the evidence that's been presented thus far and the argument that you're hearing. There's nothing that's been said that would justify you altering the way your staff and the way ultimately Judge Kanter decided was the proper way to apply your code. From the perspective of my client, when he, when they came in and applied for, what can we do on this site, and what are the rules that we play by, and the county tells them that, and they play by those rules, it would be, it would be a rather unfortunate occurrence to come in front of this body and say that for political reasons that have nothing to do with the application of your code, because people aren't happy with the application of that code, we're going to alter that decision. You know, if what I did for the last 26 years depended upon the population who sat in rooms behind me being happy, I would have never had, very few things I have done for a living would have been approved, including power plants and landfills and developments and both commercial and residential, but, and, you know, the cell towers that we all rely upon, that nobody wants, but we all want cell service and we throw our phone when we don't have it. I mean, all those very unpopular things, you know, including the houses that we choose to live in, it's okay, it's okay when we move into a neighborhood that got developed in an area that used to be, you know, a pristine pond with springs feeding it and no houses around it, and I bet you there was some wildlife running around that place before then, or more than there happens to be today. But things change, and property gets developed, and you have a code that governs how that process takes place. And that code has been applied very soundly in this case, and by your staff and by a judge, and by the way, by the advice of your lawyer tonight, whose recommendation is to enter the final order that was the recommended order from that judge. So, you know, I don't need to sit up here and cite a bunch of codes to you, because I've already done that for hours, to your DRC and in front of a judge, and in every circumstance, every audience has determined that we were, this development was compliant. If residential preservation shouldn't allow up to six units per acre, and in this case, 1.73 units per acre, so we're talking low-density, single-family residential. Low-density, by the way, is defined in your code, is up to eight units per acre. That's low-density, eight units per acre. We're below two units per acre. And so if low-density, single-family residential adjacent to low-density, single-family residential isn't compatible, then we probably, we all got a problem. And, you know, listen, I get it, people don't like things changing next door to them, but, you know, if they were to read the codes and understand what the codes permit, they would understand that there is the possibility for that to happen. And in this case, that's happening in a responsible way, and we've made every effort within reason to accommodate many of the concerns that have been addressed. There isn't a single legal basis or factual basis for you to reject the recommended order from Judge Kanter that has been cited to you, and we had asked you to do, to do what's right, which is to apply your code in the way that your code reads. And if, at the end of doing that, you don't like the outcome, then talk to your planning staff and let's go and go decide whether your code should be amended. But you don't do that in the middle of the process, when someone is playing by those rules and goes through two years, when this should have taken about six months, if that long, to get to this stage, but did so in good faith to try to listen to the concerns and address those concerns. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. I don't believe there's anything else I really need to say. We appreciate your consideration and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, and now the oral argument by Leon County.
20 minutes.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carly Schrader, I'm with the Neighbors Giblin Nickerson Law Firm, and here on behalf of the county staff, I've been involved in this process along the way. As Mr. Hunter talked about, this project has been reviewed since about November 2015, when the application was first submitted. It did go through three separate application review meetings, and the reason that three separate ones were held was because at some point, the meetings were continued in order to allow the applicant to address certain issues, including stormwater issues, and also to evaluate compatibility issues that were raised by the public, similar to some of the comments that we've heard today. And as part of that continuance, there were additional materials that were submitted to the county by the applicant, and some changes that were made to the site plan. And as part of these materials, there was a compatibility analysis that was submitted that you've heard referenced to by the petitioner's counsel. That compatibility analysis was done by a professional planner that was hired by the applicant, who testified at the DOA hearing before the ALJ. And what was looked at was development within a quarter mile of the proposed project, and that included the Morpon and the Ox Bottom Manor neighborhoods, and also Rose Hill and Ox Bottom Gardens. And so that area was looked at in terms of compatibility with the proposed project. Now, the county's staff that testified at the hearing, testified that under the policy 2.2.3 of the county's comprehensive plan, that generally, the factors that were analyzed within the compatibility analysis that was submitted by the planner are generally analyzed when it's non-residential or high-density development that's going to go next to low-density development within residential preservation. And here, based on the definitions within the comprehensive plan and the land development code, we have a low-density project that's going next to low-density development that's already in the area. So generally, the county would not go through these factors for that kind of project, but because of the interest by the public, because the compatibility analysis was submitted by the applicant, the county did take a review of those materials, did its own look at those, and came to its own conclusions regarding compatibility. So despite what petitioner's counsel said today, that analysis was looked at by the county, was reviewed, they did their own independent review of that, and came to the same conclusion that the project is compatible. This is low, this is low-density under the comprehensive plan and the land development code, which defines for residential preservation, low-density as zero to six dwelling units per acre, and that's based on the gross density of the parcel. And that's set forth within the definitions with your code and your comprehensive plan. After this material was reviewed, the staff did their analysis, they went to the Development Review Committee, they reviewed the project in August 2017, and they gave their conditional preliminary approval. All of these meetings, the three separate ARM meetings, the DRC meeting, they were all open to the public, and public comment was received, including on the compatibility and analysis. So those things were considered as this process went through. The appeal that was taken, although there was some, the appeal that was taken was just as to compatibility and consistency with certain provisions of the comprehensive plan and land development codes, that was the entire scope of the proceedings that went before the administrative law judge at DOA. And the ALJ, as, under your code requirements, held a quasi-judicial hearing, and it's similar to a trial, although the rules of evidence are a little bit more relaxed. And so received evidence from the professional staff of the county, received evidence from the, from both experts hired by the petitioner and by the respondent, and the ALJ ultimately agreed with the applicant and the county that compatibility is agreed with the, with the applicant and the county that compatibility is ultimately determined by reference to the county's own comprehensive plan and the land development code. And what matters is what's in that code and what's in that comprehensive plan. And where the project is the same development type and density as the surrounding property, in this case, that's low-density, single-family residential adjacent to low-density, single-family residential, it's compatible. And this is supported by various provisions of the comprehensive plan and the land development code. In terms of this proceeding, the, the ALJ issued his recommended order. The board is limited in terms of its standard of review in reviewing that recommended order. For factual findings that the ALJ made within that recommended order, this board is bound to those factual findings unless it determines the findings are not supported by competent substantial evidence. So not whether there's other evidence in the record that might support other findings is not at issue. It's whether the findings that were made by the ALJ are supported by competent substantial evidence. The board may modify conclusions of law if it finds that the special master's application or interpretation is erroneous. So there's two standards that apply, depending on whether you're looking at factual findings or conclusions of law. Each party in this process also had an opportunity to file exceptions to the recommended order. Any party could have filed exceptions, whether it was favorable or unfavorable, depending on, on the particular circumstances. In this case, the order was, was favorable to the county's position, but the county did make certain exceptions to paragraphs that the county thought should be modified or clarified. And so these exceptions were made as to very limited portions of the recommended order that the county staff thought should be clarified. And just wanted to point out, petitioners also had that same opportunity to raise issues with regard to the recommended order through filing these exceptions to point out if there was not competent substantial evidence to support the findings, to talk about erroneous conclusions of law. This was not done. In this case, petitioner's counsel filed no exceptions. In terms of the exceptions filed by the county, there was an exception, there's three separate exceptions. Exception one was made to paragraph 19 of the recommended order. Just to clarify, to the extent that the ALJ's finding in that paragraph seemed to insinuate that the county didn't, did not review compatibility concerns of the public, the county staff was just concerned that there might be some misconception, and so wanted clarification of that. But the county supports the board council's proposed order that's been submitted as part of your materials, denying the exception but granting a clarification that that particular paragraph isn't legally relevant. Exception two also asked for some clarification. There were some general statements that were made that were almost kind of hypothetical statements that could be applied to other projects, but not necessarily this particular project. And to avoid some confusion, the county asked for some clarification and would support the board council's proposed order that grants that exception. And exception, exception three was just some technical corrections that the county asked for, and the county would also support the board council's proposed order on, on those exceptions. And so the county staff at this point would just ask, or would support revised option one, which is the attached proposed final order submitted by the board's counsel, and entry of the proposed final order adopting the recommended order, except as modified within that final order, which would approve the project subject to the conditions set forth within the DRC preliminary written decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
That concludes the argument. So we now proceed to board discussion. And with that regard, remember that you are reviewing this like a judge would, and you are limited to the facts in the record. And the administrative law judge, who is a special master in this situation, has weighed the evidence, and so it's not your province to reweigh that evidence unless there's no competent substantial evidence to support any finding. And there's not been any exception filed to any specific finding by petitioners in this case. I have provided for you a, a proposed final order that appears as the revised option one. And I did that after reviewing the recommended order, materials in the record, the exceptions of the county. And I have not heard anything tonight that would change my recommendation.
Madam Attorney, what would be the grounds, if there are any, for us to be able to reject the order? What would, what would those grounds have to be based off of?
Well, there would have to be a conclusion of law that was incorrect, or a finding of fact with no substantial evidence in the record to support it. Those would be the only limited bases upon which you could overturn.
Thank you, ma'am. Does the commission understand exactly what we're doing here, and what it would take to go in a direction opposite of what has been recommended? Any questions there? All right, seeing that as being understood, I have Commissioner Linley, I have Commissioner Delojean Q. Commissioner Linley, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for everyone who attended tonight. I know this is a terribly difficult issue on a personal level. For us here on the county commission, we are basically acting as an appellate court right here, and we are legally bound by what we've heard. We are following the law, land use laws and our comp plan laws. And I feel the time has come to bring this to your process to, I don't know if it's a conclusion, but to a new beginning. And with that, I'd like to recommend that our board adopt the proposed final order. That would be the recommended order as modified by the exceptions filed by the county, and that would be approving the Brookside Residential Subdivision, subject to conditions outlined by the Development Review Committee in its preliminary decision.
Madam Commissioner, is that the revised order or the original order that you're recommending?
What's the difference? Is that staff recommendation?
The revised order.
The revised final order. Thank you.
Option one's been moved by Commissioner Linley. Is there a second to that motion? Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Daley. I have Commissioner Delojean Q. Commissioner Linley, are you done with the floor?
I yield the floor.
You yield the floor. Commissioner Delojean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, let me start by saying, the compatibility issue concerns me, and I, and what I'd like to be able to talk about after we get done with this is maybe go back, like was suggested, and revisit where the flaw is, and is there some changes we need to make in a policy standpoint? There was some, the debate about, you know, our job is to set policy, and our job is to basically set the direction. And you do that because you have a set of rules, and you have a set of things that you've put in place. In this case, it's called the comp plan. Like it or not, and frankly, there are times when we don't like what happens, we have to live by that. If we decided on the fly, in my opinion, that we would change based on whims of the, the body here, politically, we would have anarchy and chaos. I think it would eliminate any ability to have a process. I mean, we've gotten this far as a community because we have a comp plan. It's not perfect. It's not infallible. I'd also say that we've got lawyers working for us tonight, we've got land use planners, we've got a raft of people that are looking out for the county and trying to make sure we're following this process. And as much as the other arguments may hold merit, I have to look at those and say, these are the people that are brought in to determine whether or not we're doing the job right. And if, all the way through this for the last two years, it seems like we have met every burden. So it's painful for me because I'm the district commissioner. Believe me, I would love to be able to find some reason legally, but I have a hard time, and I'm going to support the motion. But I think, I'll go back to my original statement, which is, I think it shows that there may be an area where there's a flaw in the comp plan. And then when the planning process comes back up and we have a chance to review that, I'd like a chance to at least talk about, how did we get to this point? It's not fair, however, to say that in this case, we've gone all the way around unless change, change the rules. And I'll give you an example. When I first got elected, the first bid of any significance came in, and the loser came and said, we were cheated, this was unfair, it didn't work right. And I thought, well, wow. And they, they made a pretty good compelling case. I don't even remember the specifics. So I went back and said, well, we, we need to throw this out. You know, this bid wasn't done right. There were some problems. And the problem was, we followed the rules, and the person who won, won fairly. And you can't go back and change the rules to, because you have a finish that you don't like. So as painful as it is, I'm going to support this, and I think this is the process we signed up for, and I think it's the appropriate thing for tonight. But I would say, and I'd just ask staff if we could circle back at some point when it's appropriate and address it from a planning and a policy standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Linley is in queue to speak, but I had a question for the county administrator first. Would Commissioner, what Commissioner Delojean's asked for in this review, would that need to be an agenda item, or that we could take up after this and on a vote, or could it be just a direction for you guys to bring it back?
Probably, it would probably be most appropriate if, perhaps tonight under Commissioner's time, if you'd request an agenda item, we'd be happy to bring that back.
So if you want to bring it up during your time, that's, you're more than welcome. Commissioner Daley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly do appreciate it. These are those issues that are really tough, because no matter how we vote, half of you are going to be very upset. And we get that. One of the beauties about this community is that we are very passionate about our neighborhoods and very passionate about our communities. And I want to tell you that as citizens, for you to come down, come up, participate, we certainly do appreciate it. I want to compliment the petitioner, the applicant, and the attorney for the county as well, for your professionalism in your arguments. All three of you were extremely compelling, and we certainly do appreciate it. I, for one, always get a little nervous because I'm not an attorney. And so when we get in these quasi-judicial hearings, I pay very close attention to the instructions that we have and what we do. My position is, is just like Commissioner Delojean's position. I think that this particular hearing has found that maybe there are elements of the comprehensive plan or the land development code that we need to look at. But we cannot change the game, cannot change the rules in the middle of the game. It has been through the process, has been through the DOA process. I seconded the motion, and I'm going to support the motion on the table.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Delojean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will echo my colleagues' comments. Thank you, Commissioner Daley, for recognizing professionalism, and all of you taking the time out to come down here today. We know that's not easy, and you've been in this process for a long time. I agree with the comments that have been made. If I, I think one of the visuals that was discussed was looking uphill at a number of houses, and I may not enjoy that either at all, and I may have been concerned about it if I was in the neighborhood. It is, to me, extremely important that we follow the rules that are in place. And going through this entire process, if this was one-off, and we had to make a decision one night without anybody else looking at this, from the staff, from outside council and council, I very much appreciate our conversation and, and actually your response to some of the county exception. We've had a lot of eyes on this from different points of view, and I think that serves us well. We've gotten outside of just the county staff, who I think do an exceptional job, but it's always good to have checks and balances from all different sides. So I very much appreciate the time and attention everyone's put into this. But it's, when it's your backyard, it's personal, and it hits you hard, and I understand that. So I do think a discussion on the policy end is warranted. I mean, we have done this before when issues come up in these discussions. A gas station on Crump Road, that was resolved in different ways, but it illuminated a policy discussion that we took up after and worked with citizens to come up with a different approach in the keep-it-rule process. We have precedent for that, and I think that is the appropriate way to respond to this. I will say, every time I've seen cluster, and I don't think cluster designs come up very much, there are questions about that. And I think some value is added in the environmental protection that may be encouraged by that, but there are often questions. So if we want to look at that in an agenda item, Commissioner Delojean, if you want to bring that up, I would welcome that in just the policy questions. Although, I do believe cluster designs do incorporate a lot of values of our community. So I don't want to say here tonight that I see problems with the rules as they are necessarily. They are the rules, but they create challenges in some situations that we have to think about. And that's our job in the political end, in the policy end, but not when we apply the rules that exist. So with that, I do feel the need, forgive me, colleagues, I hope, to address Mr. Adams' comments before, and council, I very much appreciate your comment there. Every single person who runs for office has political donations. I happen to be up this term. But I will say that for me, the rules are paramount, and I reflect on that. And there, if you review my list, and I think it was kind of a, I am the one that stood out to you right now, but anytime this came up, it could have been anyone. So I understand you use all the tools in your toolkit, what you think might help. But I am proud of having donors on my list who would probably disagree. Strong environmentalists and developers. We are a community that is very diverse, and we have a lot of decisions. And applying these rules sometimes benefits some, sometimes benefits others. So I, again, appreciate council's comments earlier. There, there are strict rules on recusal, so I will take the vote tonight and don't see any need to do otherwise. I have reviewed the material and listened to all of you carefully, and I really appreciate it. That's what I value is all of your comments and the staff interpretation. So thank you.
Commissioner Breder. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, Mr. Chairman, we, we're not the United States Congress, and there's no need that we should be shut down, as we have been a government that's been shut down. And when it takes two years to get an answer on whether or not you can, what you got to build on a piece, piece of property, that to me is government shutdown. And tonight, as Commissioner Linley said, we afforded an opportunity to reopen this government for this developer. And as I heard the developer indicate that they had met with the neighbors, not at the bar, he iterated that it was at the church. And I guess that's the honest, as honest a place as you can go, to be open, to be transparent, to be at the church. No one dissented and said that it not occurred. Somebody mentioned the judge's credentials. I think one lawyer said that his credentials were pretty sterling, and before the US Supreme Court and Florida courts and all. But the developer has pretty consistent and outstanding credentials of serving well this community. Good times and low times, and, and this developer has met the letter of our law again and again, outstanding. Probably could not line another developer toe-to-toe, shoulder-to-shoulder with this particular developer. So we don't have Rudy Poot developer, one of, one of outstanding developers in the history of this whole county, has done everything, put out good money, and has said that they went to our county staff for advisement as to what could possibly be done. And there is a concept, council, called detrimental reliance. And if they're taking steps detrimentally relying upon their government's admonition as to what was acceptable, then I feel the county, we would be responsible to refund them for their money, and possibly maybe with interest because we're liable for their losses. This is inside of the urban service area, and I searched hard and I think captured the high points of all of the arguments here. And I was trying to understand the big issue of compatibility, but the judge listened for nine hours, and we were told that the judge was very, very seasoned in his credentials of 25 years' experience. And tonight, I guess the question is, what would I find inconclusive or inconsistent comp plan with the judge? And am I willing to reverse or go against the judge's findings? And I'm the judge's findings? And I'm unable to second-guess Judge Cantor's findings, our staff's findings, council for our staff and their findings. And so I'm well content tonight. I'm wondering out loud, as we raise the issue of compatibility, if in fact, we owe to, to the persons objecting, the neighbors who are objecting. And when I saw early tonight on item nine, that the median house in our community, the median house, was $199,000.900. $199,900 is what the average house cost is in our community. And I kind of complained a little bit, you heard me, saying that, you know, this housing is getting out of the reach of the median citizen, for the median cost. And I'm just pondering, you know, out loud, whether what we're asking about compatibility has to do with the cost of the house that Brookside will represent, whether or not compatibility is just that these houses are going to be just too, too stinking cheap to be across the street, or whether it's going to be near Moore Pond. They're just not good enough. I mean, they're not our ilk, they're not our stock. What is the issue? I don't get it. So, the setback question was met, the zoning question was met. They could be allowed six units per acre. They come down to 1.73 units per acre. They have just bent all over to be whatever it is you do. But does the county commission owe and require that a gated community, which, I guess you have to have an access code to get in, whether or not we owe to certain neighborhoods in our community, that the people who come around them are building homes consistent with theirs? So, I don't know what the cost of Brookside Village is going to be, and what they're proposing there. But maybe it's not going to be a million-dollar house, or a $2-million house, stuff like that. If you're talking about Moore's Pond, you're talking about other neighborhood, Ox Bottom, you know, 300, 400,000. But again, in my world, the average house is 199,900. And I don't know what else we owe. And if we're talking about economics, there's nothing in the comp plan that said that you can't bill whatever the average house cost of Brookside might be across the street from a gated neighborhood. If that's what we're trying to get to, Commissioner Dozier, I'm not interested in what you're going to bring up on your time, compatibility. Nobody has said that word, but that's the only thing I'm thinking about. And if I'm wrong about it, then I've been wrong before. But without any clarity on it, it's my thinking that this is a socioeconomic rejection, that we don't want Brookside next door, across the street. Now, this area is the right place for it to go. This is the area that has a brand-new commercial zone over in Bantam. I mean, it's just the fastest-growing commercial stuff that's aggregating in our community. Certainly housing to support it. This is the area that a new road was built connecting Meridian over to Bainbridge Road. Stuff is happening out there. I mean, why is all this occurring in family growth, family homes, are not to be rejected? I don't know. But we've put in so much infrastructure out there that it makes sense. Looked like we was expecting people to come. Except, these people ain't compatible. Well, ain't nobody compatible. 98% of our community is not compatible to Ox Bottom, Moore's Pond. We just ain't. And we can't find a compatible neighborhood on the west side, on the south side. I don't know about the east side. I don't know. But we just ain't got that. We're not compatible either. So, I'm well pleased tonight that after two years, that our government has reopened, and a decision, if we approve this recommendation coming forward by Commissioner Lindsay, takes place. It's my hope in our futures, and I think that citizens have the right, and I respect it, to fight the thing, beat it down to the ground, kick it in the head, punch it, scream, scratch, whatever you got to do not to make it happen. That's why we're America. They're supposed to do what they did. They're going to want it next to them, across the street. And they've done a great job. But in the end, our government is to provide that for the rules that are laid out, that a developer, a person seeking to do business in our community, would be afforded the chance to move forward under the prevailing rules. And under that basis, my due respect to all the great people who weighed in, but I've been asked tonight to make some decision as a judge-like figure. And in that regard, I will side with the motion that's been offered, because in my judgment, I have found no fault at all with the developer, the steps that have been taken, our staff's comments to us, what the judge himself said. I have to support this body of findings. So, I thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to agree with Commissioner Dozier's comments, to use it as a point, to go back and look, and improve, or to look at what we do, both Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Daley. I think that any time we can do things better, we can use an opportunity like this to look at exactly what we do. And then, secondly, I'll be brief. I appreciate the passion of the neighborhood, and I appreciate your courage to come out and speak tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make some quick remarks. First of all, when all the residents came out today, thank you for coming out. I always think your words fell upon deaf ears. I think, I think every commissioner up here took into consideration every single thing that each of one, each one of you has said today. But I think that, one of my colleagues said it best, what was in place when this first started is what we have to judge by on this case. I think it was Commissioner Dozier who spoke on it first, in saying that Mr. Gazovini has gone through every single step that we've asked him to go through. He's been, he's tried, I think he's tried to meet with the neighborhood, and try to do as much as he can to appease the neighborhood. But even more so than that, we have something in our comp plan that he's abided by. Whether we agree with what's in there or not, he's abided by it. And now we're at a place where a judge has said that he's abided by it, staff has said the same thing, and we're being recommended by an attorney representing us, that the judge who said he's done the same thing is right as well. And so, the most we can do at this point, I believe, is to look at what we have in our comp plan, and if we need to make adjustments to it, make adjustments to it. But to change the rules right here today, and say because we believe there's something wrong now, I don't think it'd be fair to Mr. Gazovini, or to anyone else who would have, in this case, presented a similar development before we had the opportunity to have these types of conversations. And so, I will, I will be supporting the motion on the floor. But I do think Commissioner Dozier is right. We do need to have a conversation about what's in our comp plan, and how it affects cases like what we're looking at today. I don't want any one of the speakers tonight to take this as us being insensitive, or us not listening to what you've said, because I don't think that's the case at all. I think we're bound by the rules that were in place when this started. And there's not much, there's not many options as to what we can do here to change those rules that were in place when this started. And so, I would ask that each one of you respect the fact that we have to go by the rules that we have in place. With that being said, we're moving now to a vote. Motion on the floor is for staff recommendation, that most have been made by Commissioner Lindsay, it's been seconded by Commissioner Daley. All those who favor the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye. Party opposed? Motion carries out objection. Thank you. Madam Attorney, any more business on this one?
No, sir.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Commissioner Lindsay? Oh, Herb's on his way. All right. I mean, we can keep going if you guys want to. Okay, okay. I have, right now, I have Commissioner, do you want to speak, Commissioner Lindsay? I have Commissioner Lindsay, Commissioner Prater is in queue, and then we're going to move on to Commissioner comment?
I'm just going to go to Commissioner.
Okay, well, Commissioner Lindsay, go for it.
I'll just make my commissioner comment. I just didn't want people to leave with the feeling that, speaking for myself, I have faith in our comp plan as a very good comp plan. And I don't want people to go away feeling that, but for our flawed comp plan, we would have seen, you know, perhaps acted differently. Maybe the comp, we know the comp plan is always subject to some changes, but I just don't want to lay it on the comp plan as, I acted in good faith on this particular case. And that's really all I wanted to say, just to drive home the point that I don't think it's the comp plan's fault.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsay. Commissioner Prater?
Commissioners, I fail to state what I think procedurally, I think procedurally that stood out to me, and that is that the petitioner's counsel did not file an allowable exception to the judge's order. And if the counsel didn't file an exception to the judge, and it was, you know, that was permitted. Certainly, why, you know, I mean, how can you come before us, you know, to do what you didn't ask the judge to do, and you're not asking him to set aside, then to come and say the judge just mucked up, and, you know, he was wrong on this, he was wrong on that, the judge messed up on 2.3.3? Well, if the judge did that, why didn't you put that in writing, and make your exception? So, I was confused by that approach, because certainly, if I had disagreed with the judge, and it's within the procedural processes to file an exception, it should have been placed in writing, made a part of his record. And I was confused by that, and thought that we didn't have to do cleanup for someone who had not filed the exception.
Thank you, Mr. Prater. Miss, I'm sorry, Madam Attorney, thank you so much for leading the student process. I do, I do want, if you, just right before you leave, you could just address what Commissioner Prater had said, just real quick. That would have been a proper, I mean, could you just address that?
Yes, absolutely. I, too, was wondering why no exceptions have been filed. It's not a condition precedent to making oral argument here. However, it would have been useful to have them for review. And I certainly would have reviewed them and acted on them, had I had them. However, I heard everything that was said. And if all of that was said, had been put in writing, and brought to me, it would not have changed the outcome. Largely, it was a request to re-way the evidence, which is totally prohibited by the code. So, in the end, it didn't change anything. But I totally agree with you that it would have been nice to have had them, you know, because had they presented something else that, you know, that I wouldn't have been prepared for, it would have been to their disadvantage. But I looked at all those papers. This is actually the whole kit and caboodle, but there's four pages to each page, front and back. So you can see how thick, how thick this is.
Well, council- Thank you again for leading the student process.
Typically, a formal, written argument would be placed to oral argument being made. That would have been submitted. So, it was weird.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for leading the student process.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go with Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess first, just wrapping this up, we may all have some final thoughts. Commissioner Lindsay, I really appreciate your comments. The reason why I mentioned the values added in a cluster development is because I think any time, just like a hurricane after action report, it is good to review when things come up and there are questions. But there are values within a cluster development process, and within that application, that I think we talked about just, you know, earlier today at our workshop. So, I think any type of review like this is good. But I'm not sure this is the wrong policy to have in place either. So, thank you for mentioning that. And I was sensitive to not leaving a feeling that we thought our rules were wrong at this point. A review is just a review. We should always do that, right? So, I think we had a good discussion. I appreciate hearing all of your thoughts on this. This isn't an easy one. What I hope might be an easy one, and, Mr. Chair, you mentioned Created Equal earlier. Our staff did a fantastic job, as always, as did Village Square. And I am very excited that we may hear an announcement soon. Forgive me. Council Sylvia, thank you very much, Sylvia. I know you're walking out.
Thank you.
Yes. So, we may hear about a second Created Equal event announced soon for this year. But I would like to request an agenda item for an event that would take place sometime between January and March of next year. And to give you a little heads-up on this, I have discussed it with the county administrator, and some of you may have talked to Talcie Symphony Orchestra, or members of Village Square about this event. But it is a piece, it is similar to Requiem that they did last year, that focused on the Holocaust, and they partnered with the Holocaust Education Group and others. This is a piece that has been performed many places around the country, called Ode to Understanding. And it is about the very conversations, and the proclamation you read earlier, Commissioner Dozier, about race relations. And it could be a very powerful event. And we have talked about other related events with Village Square. And, Mr. County Administrator, I don't want to get ahead of this, but in our discussion, I was very happy to hear that you and the deputy county administrator thought this could play a very nice role in our ongoing efforts in the Created Equal series. So, in the next week or two, TSO, the symphony, will have dates and other things. And I would like to ask for an agenda item for us to consider being a title sponsor, to really go all-in on this event with Village Square and the symphony for 19 as part of our Created Equal series.
Motion made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Any objection? Seeing no objection, so it is accepted.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, there is some timing on this. So, Mr. County Administrator, do you have any problem with bringing back that agenda item at our meeting on February 13?
I think we'll turn it right around.
Okay, thank you. And Mandy Stringer will be available to brief all of you, and give you more details on or before that meeting. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, you got anything else? Mr. Vice Chair?
Nothing.
Commissioner Daley?
No.
Commissioner Dozier?
I met with Rabbi Ronberg the other day, and I think this has really a lot of potential for us as a community. It ties right in with Village Square, as Kristen said, and race relations. And what a cool opportunity to kind of merge TSO and some of the issues we've got in the community. Anyway, so, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see if we could get an agenda item brought back to talk about what's going on around the country relative to the opioid, specifically as it relates to the lawsuits. If you're paying attention, and I've seen it, Florida Association of Counties is dealing with, National Association of Counties is dealing with this, we end up being the whipping post for every issue relative to the opioid crisis. If you think about it, you call 911, it's our 911. You dispatch EMS, it's our EMS. You dispatch the sheriff, it's our sheriff. You might, in many cases, the hospital's a county hospital. You're going to go to our jail. You're going to go to our rehab. Unfortunately, in many cases, you're going to go to our new morgue. And so these are all county services that are getting blown up, and we're basically on the back end of this. So there's a mounting set of lawsuits around the country where people, or counties in particular, are teeing up to sue. I'd like to see if we could get an agenda item brought back. And I'll let staff and the council determine timeline on that. But just have a discussion about, is it appropriate to jump in, and if so, when and how? So just educate us a little bit, and bring us something back. So that would be my motion, bring an agenda item back with that.
Is there a second to that? Motion seconded. Any objection? Seeing none, so it is accepted.
Thank you. Secondly, I've got a note here about a letter of collaboration on Smith FSU. This is a National Science Foundation, and they want to do a study relative to the- Science Foundation, and they want to do a study relative to the socioeconomic impacts of septic tanks, in light of our earlier thing with what's going on. And they just are looking for a letter of collaboration, and it's a fairly benign letter of collaboration. It doesn't say we buy into this, or we think it's the greatest thing going, just we support, if the NSF is willing to fund this, to go out and do this study. So, if that's okay, I'd like to have a letter put together from the chairman, showing that we're willing to collaborate.
Any objection? Commissioner Proctor?
Our letter would support their application to the National Science Foundation.
Right.
They pay for it.
Yeah.
And that's all.
Yes. There's no financial impact, there's no commitment, it's just basically saying.
To what extent are their findings compelling and binding upon us? Is there anything, General Counsel, that we're?
No.
Okay, very good. So, we need to put this as, you do want agenda?
No, 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 I just want a letter to go out. We're in support of their application, yeah.
Short is no objection. Commissioner DeLoge?
And then, my last one, which I brought up earlier during the public hearing, and I don't want to make it sound like the comp plan has problems, as was many, and Commissioner Proctor pointed out, I may not be willing to buy into this. I think the process here showed that there might be an area that we could tune up, and the comp plan is not cast in stone. We do this all the time. As time goes on, we find stuff that we think, we could do that better. And I'd just like to, and I'll yield again to staff as far as the timing and how we structure this, but just kind of a broad brush, if we were to tune up this particular area of the comp plan, how? And if not, that's okay, too, but I'd like to at least have a little deeper dive, because I think there was comments about our job is policy, and that's right. Our job is not, as John, Commissioner Daley said, change the rules in the middle of the game. So, anyway, but I don't want to, please understand, it's not a reflection that I think the comp plan's full of flaws. It's clearly not a perfect document, but this is our job, to look and see, can we do it better?
Is there a second to that?
Yeah.
Second, Commissioner Dozier?
I had a quick question. So, Commissioner DeLoge, we, I did not mention this earlier, we have got a process initiated to review the full land use element of the comp plan. I think that's going to, as we saw today, take a little while. Your focus on the cluster development and that particular part, and the reason why I ask this is, Mr. County Administrator, I'm wondering, you, and forgive me, it is getting late here, so I'm not going to remember the specifics, but there are instances where we have two neighborhoods, maybe one's built pre-comp plan, that are very, very different in their density. And so, when the compatibility question comes up, it is hard to judge this again was outside of that, because it was still residential preservation, zero to six, all of that, despite the debate about it. So, I'm just wondering if this question folds into that other analysis that staff's doing? I'm wondering about timing and the scope of what you're asking, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It may, and there may be certain things in our review where we have to say, hey, in this case or that case, we may want to wait for the larger rewrite, but it wouldn't prevent us from bringing back recommendations to you now and say.
That's great.
Hey, here are some areas that we may have recommendations on. The good news is that many of the provisions that we're talking about really aren't very old. It's relatively new policy implementation on what you want to try to achieve in certain areas. So, again, we can take it while it's still fresh and do a review and bring back any recommendations we might have.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. I'm fully supported.
Okay.
Commissioner DeLoge, Mr. Chair, I just wanted some clarity on the scope, because I think it's in our interest to keep all these moving pieces.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of in mind as we go forward, so, thank you.
Any more comment? Any objection to Commissioner DeLoge's request? Seeing none, short is accepted?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seeking a resolution, support of the birthday, 75th birthday, and the service of Pastor Gloria McCree, the walking by faith ministries, and this proclamation would be delivered on February 18th, in honor of Pastor Gloria McCree Day.
I'll second it. Any objection? Motion carries.
Thank you. Second request of Commissioners is a resolution proclamation recognizing the book, recent book, I went through the book signing of Mr. Roosevelt Wilson, who wrote a, I think, an iconic book on Coach Jake Gaither. It adds dimensions to our understanding and insights of a legend who served our community for 25 years as a football coach. And luckily, I bought a book, you know, in advance, and they were sold out. And in talking to Mr. Wilson, I've encouraged Mr. Wilson to hold a couple of more book signings, because it was huge. And I'd like to, for our board, to present proclamation recognizing this outstanding installment of knowledge about Coach Gaither, written from first person, with Mr. Wilson.
I'll second any objection. Short is accepted. Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Alfred Perry passed yesterday, and he was a longtime serving member, Mr. Perry's in his 90s, and one of the early African-American men who worked in this building during the eight to five hours, if you will. And I want it for our county to recognize, and I don't know if the clerk's office, you guys are going to do something for Mr. Perry, but I know he's one of the early African-American men that worked in this building, was not a janitor. And I sought a resolution recognizing his early years of service here.
Any objection? Short is approved.
Earlier this evening, Sharon O'Fonny said that she came and she was challenged to be here, and I wanted the commissioner to know that she lost her brother today. And notwithstanding the loss of her brother today, I thought she was ill, had a cold or something, but she had been grieving, and she made effort to come. So, I wanted to flesh out, and that we might know the degree of stress that she was feeling on her heart, that she was still advocating for big, big Ben Crime Stoppers.
Okay.
Thought that noteworthy. Then, Commissioners, the charter review last week offered for us a letter to us, asking us, I believe, that we would weigh in on the conversation about moving our state capital. Earlier, item nine, we got a report about, from the Office of Economic Vitality, and I could think of nothing that would create a downside in a dismal report if, in fact, traction gained. I believe if a ballot question was put out there, because it's still with the Constitutional Revision Commission. So, we still have a two-headed monster, one, a legislative file bill asking for a study to go forward, and then we have in the Constitutional Revision Commission, an ask that this might be put on the ballot for statewide voter approval in November. Either way, both of these things is dangerous. And I think that, to the extent that, and I saw a letter circulate, and I just can't remember if it was to us, from us, what happened?
The Charter Committee sent a letter opposing it?
They did. Now, does it, I mean, they're the Charter Committee, appointed by us, would we not also, as the county commission, wouldn't it be appropriate for us to weigh in as the commission?
Leave it up to the commission discussion. I remember I was at the same meeting, and the Charter Review Committee sent us a letter basically asking or objecting to moving the capital. Also sent that to our delegation. I think the question before our board now is, I know we all agree on the capital not being moved, of course, I guess would be whether we want to send a letter to our delegation and to the speaker, as well as the President of the Senate, reflecting that, or if we want to do a resolution, or if we want to do anything at all. But I'll leave that up to the discretion of the board.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, I just believe that it was an ask from this commissioner that charter would weigh in, and that they might contemplate language for even our charter some kind of way that would make this, make us, I won't say immune, but create a fight or something. But they came up with the letter. They are appointed by us, they were soon sunset in their deliberations. Yet, we have to continue that struggle and battle, and as the governing body for the community of Leon, with economic reports such as what we heard today, our interest in oversight in economic development, to me, includes our fight and drawing the line in the dirt, and saying whatever it is that we're going to say on why this is a poor idea. I think that as a leading institutional body of government, maybe even joined with the city, if we're not going to stand for this, what will we stand for collectively? So, I put that on the floor. If there's no objection, I'd ask for a letter, and even one with the mayor and chair, being the flagship statement, representing the interests of Tallahassee. The legislature's in session, they need to hear from us. We can't just go to sleep.
I think the mayor has independently taken this on. I would be supportive of a letter from our county commission. I think that would actually be more effective, directly aimed at the leadership of the legislature than a resolution. And I know our legislative delegation is probably, I mean, our delegation and our lobbyists, I assume, are trying to stay on top of this, but I would be supportive of a letter written rather quickly, I guess, depending on where the idea is floating around.
Commissioner Dozier, any objection to that letter? Commissioner Dozier?
I don't have objection to the letter. I think it adds to what the chamber and others have done. I would be, and I think you just addressed this, Commissioner Lindley, so I probably don't need to say more, but I would be sensitive to the fact that the mayor is running for governor, so there is a different type of conversation he is having right now with potential other candidates. We'll leave that there. So, I think a full letter on behalf of the commission, if it was a full letter on behalf of the city, I think that would be good. The only other thought I had, Mr. Chair, was that this issue, it has come up before, I think they're going to study it. We all know the cost would be astronomical, the impact, I'm not sure, I'm not as worried about this going forward, as is just the tone that's set right now. I appreciate the legislative updates, I don't know if Andy's in the room, but that we're now getting from staff. More concerning to me, just to kind of pile on to this point right now, is another year, and perhaps more aggressive year, because of the constitutional review process and the legislature, of attack on home rule. I've come off of a couple of FAC and Foundation Board meetings recently, and the Florida Planning Council Association Board, everyone is talking about this and the extreme impact, and I think there was another item considered by the CRC just last week that we got a notice from FAC. I'm wondering if we might need a bit of an update on the home rule issues, and I think this letter, I would support it on this one issue. I would like for us to lean in on the home rule issue as well. If we can kind of look at that and speak to the balance and the joint responsibility that state government and local government has throughout our state, I'd be very interested in that. So, don't, you know, mean to extend this too long, we're very late, everyone's here, thank you, but approve the letter, but if, you know, Commissioner Proctor is willing, or if anyone else was interested, I wouldn't mind having a discussion in a future meeting about home rule, and I guess that would be the February 13th meeting.
No, I absolutely concur. It's, I want to say it's a separate issue, because we're going to have home rule problems even after the state capital moves. So, you know, it's a distinct issue that faces 67 counties and those of us which are chartering in particular, and I think that the mayor has attempted to, you know, so far walk alone in that regard. And I think, Mr. Chairman, I would foresee your responsibility in this walk, and Commissioner DeLoge is absolutely right, so those are the two issues that we need to weigh in on. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I want to recognize.
Are there any objections? Short is accepted.
So, the home rule and the, okay. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I want to recognize my former aide, Delane Adams. Delane, would you stand up and, da-da-da, just stand up one time and give a church bow? Delane Adams, who's visiting our city, and he is a lobbyist for one of the outstanding organizations of America, and we're very, very pleased to see Delane here in the chamber again. And as I noted earlier, the first thing he said to me when we went on break, you guys still talking about Woodville Sewell, you know, and that was just, it was just amazing, and I hope for sure that we will soon be past that issue. Chairman, you did a great job tonight, you kept us here a little longer, you know I got ADD.
Yeah.
And you'd almost lost in about three hours ago. But we appreciate the leadership of the meeting you gave us tonight. And Herb, we thank you for outstanding counsel who you provided for the hearing tonight. We appreciate that, too. All right, thank you.
All right. Just real quick, thank you guys for getting us through the process today and being patient as we got through the process. I think every citizen felt like they were heard tonight. I still say you guys reserve these hard issues for my chairman year, but it's okay, I'll take it. And I look forward to seeing you next month. Oh, one more thing, my wife's birthday was on the 15th. Happy birthday. She'd kill me if I didn't say that. Yeah, yeah. And so, with that being said, we're adjourned.